Okay, it's 6:30. Recording in progress.
Good evening. This is Mary Ellen McKay, Chair of the City of Nashua Zoning Board of Adjustment, and this is the June 28, 2022 zoning board meeting. This evening's meeting will be conducted in a hybrid format. The meeting is accessible in person in the third-floor auditorium of Nashua City Hall, 229 Main Street, and via Zoom at the link posted in all public meeting agendas. Attendance via telephone is available using the Zoom connection details. Minutes of tonight's meeting, as well as audio and video recordings, will be available later at NashuaNH.gov/AgendaCenter. Select the Zoning Board of Adjustment. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting, please call 603-821-2049, and they will help you connect. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. The Chair is in control of the proceeding and calls upon all who wish to speak in order as their raised hands are observed. The Board follows the meeting protocols and procedures identified in its bylaws. The applicant will present their case for 15 minutes, followed by questions by the Board. Next persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition will be asked to speak for up to five minutes. If there are questions or opposition, the applicant will have five minutes to present a response. Finally, one and only one person with questions or an opposition will be permitted to speak again before the Board deliberates and determines an outcome. A timer is used to manage speaking time. Kate Poirier, our zoning board coordinator, will notify us when one minute is remaining and again when the speaker's time has expired. If you are participating by Zoom and wish to speak when public input is requested, please use the raise hand option, which can be found under Reactions on a Computer or the More menu on a phone. The Chair will call you in turn. Please use the lower hand option when you have completed your questions or comments. Please mute your microphone until called to speak. Note that all votes are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call. Tonight, we will be hearing requests for deviation from the zoning, the Nashua zoning code, in the form of applications for variances. A variance is a request that seeks permission to something that ordinance does not permit. Variances also have five points of law that need to be met. Per the City of Nashua bylaws and State of New Hampshire revised statutes, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, this Board will hear all scheduled cases if a quorum of three voting Board members is present at the meeting. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this Board makes. Should we render a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received by the City of Nashua Planning Department within 30 calendar days from the date of decision. Should this Board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact Mr. Carter Falk of the Planning Department for more information. We have five regular members and typically, or normally, three alternate members. Tonight, we have all five members present and one alternate member. We also have Mr. Carter Falk of the Deputy Planning Manager, Ms. Kate Poirier, the zoning coordinator, and I do not see Mr. Matt Sullivan. We are going to start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. And for, oh, there's no Board member participating by Zoom. So we do not have to go through that. Mr. Steve Lionel, our Vice Chair.
Present.
Mr. Jack Carrier, our Clerk.
Present.
Mr. JP Boucher.
Present.
Mr. Rob Shaw.
Present.
And they, and Mary Ellen McKay, Chair, I'm also present. Those are your five regular members. And Ms. Estafia Boris?
Present.
And Ms. Estafia is our alternate. Mr. Falk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, there's one change. Case for seven, Meredith Drive, has been tabled to the July 26 meeting. Will not be on tonight.
Thank you very much. Now I will proceed and read case number one into the record.
Just a one thing, I don't think you said it, and you normally do, but Ms. Boris will participate in discussion.
Oh, I apologize. You're correct, thank you.
The audience was wondering about.
No, thank you for that. The five regular members will do the voting unless a regular member recuses themselves for their own personal reasons. Ms. Boris, however, will participate in all discussions that we have. And should any member recuse themselves, she will then be able to participate in the vote. Is that, I, thank you. Mr. Shaw. Case number one. Sharon Gasly and Scott Cochran, owners, 20 Swart Terrace, Sheet 48, Lot 74, requesting variance from land use code section 190-44 to exceed maximum fence height, six feet permitted, eight feet proposed for 90-foot section along rear yard property line. This is in the RA Zone, Ward 3. Is there somebody present to present this application? If you would please come to the mic, state your name and your address for the record. And if the mic needs to be raised or lowered, please adjust to your comfort level.
Good evening. Sharon Gasly and my husband, Scott Cochran.
20 Swart Terrace, Nashua.
The floor is yours.
We're seeking a variance to replace an existing six-foot fence with an eight-foot fence on the property line that abuts Greeley Park. So for our property, it would be the rear fence line. It's a section 90 feet long. Do you, do you want to know more information? Or, I'm aware you've got our application, so I'm not sure, not been through this before.
Do you have anything else you want to tell the Board?
Well, I, it's in the application, but the reason that we are seeking the variance is because of maintenance work that was done by Eversource. Our neighborhood power lines circumnavigate the rear of our properties. And for those properties on the north side of the neighborhood that abut Greeley Park, that means that the power lines run down the Greeley, in Greeley Park, just beyond our property line. And Eversource did maintenance this spring, several months ago, that consisted of a lot of tree cutting. Specifically with our property, our property is located nearest to the access road that runs through the park. If you know the park, you know that that road curves behind the Baseball Diamond. Our property happens to be the one right behind the Baseball Diamond, where the road is nearest to the property line. And Eversource decided that our property, well, that the city property immediately behind us would be the access point for all their maintenance going either direction along the power lines. And the result of that decision is that they clearcut the entire understory behind us. I did include some pictures with the application. I can see that they're up here now. There are two mature trees that were left, and pretty much everything else is gone. That's our roof. These pictures were taken from the Porta Potty and Baseball Diamond section in the park. Previously, we were entirely screened from the park. Now, as you can see, we're not. We are working, Eversource has been very accommodating in terms of trying to help mitigate the damage that the clearcutting and their decision entailed with respect to our loss of visual and noise privacy. And they are working with us. And part of that plan includes putting, installing an eight-foot fence, with your permission. They, I might also add, I don't think this was in the application because we didn't have a decision at the time. There are, there are three items that we've agreed on to mitigate the damage. Raising the fence is one. A second, because they do not want to plant, to replant anything on the park side of the fence, they are going to plant some, they've agreed to do some screening planting inside our yard, along the back fence. And the third agreed-upon action, that my understanding is, has been approved by the city, is they're going to install a short section of fence right behind where the split rail currently is, the broken split rail. They're going to install a solid, visually solid fence, some kind of stockade fence in the park, just in that one little section where the road curves. And, and that will give us, it's actually, you can see it in that picture, the previous picture. It basically, in between, you can see a break in the split rail fence, and then two sections of fence to the left and one to the right. That section, my under, I'm told by our Eversource contact, the city has agreed to install a fence there with a double gate that will allow utility vehicles to pass, but will provide an extra barrier, screening barrier for us.
In addition, there's two of our neighbors.
Please get closer to the microphone.
In addition, two of our neighbors already have eight-foot fences on the back of their properties. The Dutces right next to us, and then another two doors down, another neighbor has a eight-foot fence as well.
Yeah, you can, you can see in that photograph, that's, that gate is the corner of our property, and to the right of it is our neighbor, our, our neighbors, the Dutces, who have an existing eight-foot fence. And you can also see in that picture the telephone pole, or utility pole. That's one of the power poles.
Thank you. Does anybody, any member of the Board have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Carrier, sir?
Maybe more of an observation, and that is, if, if you are approved and an eight-foot fence goes in, it doesn't look to me like that's going to hide the utility line. That's significantly higher than the eight-foot fence.
We're not trying to hide the utility line.
If you could speak into the microphone, please.
We're not trying to hide the utility line, because that would probably be a 20-foot fence. Just trying to block the lights out from the Department of Public Works that shining through our property and mitigate some of the noise at night from the people in the park.
Okay, thanks.
I, I didn't mention, Scott touched on it, but there is a 24/7 utility light on the far side of the park from us, on the north side of the park, that previously we had no visual sightline to, that now shines in our eyes when we're sitting on our back porch. And the, and raising the fence by two feet will actually block that, we believe.
No further questions? There's no further questions. So you may have a seat. Thank you. Is there any?
Thank you.
Anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone present who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? And is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak with any questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public meeting and open the public hearing. Mr. Lionel.
I'm fully in favor of the application. I think it's a very reasonable thing to do. And as the applicant noted, one of their neighbors already has an eight-foot fence, so this would, would fit in.
Thank you. Mr. Carrier.
I'm in favor of the application. I think it's certainly a unique situation in this property that backs up to a pretty busy public park. And, you know, it seems that for many years, there's just been a wall, a canopy of natural vegetation, which is now gone. And with that utility shed, or whatever it is on the north side, kind of on 24/7, I think that's another special condition that warrants an eight-foot fence. So I'm in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
I also support the application. Again, I definitely agree with you, it's all a criteria for variance. As Mr. Curry stated, I think the special conditions of the property is the closest to the access road. And the visual issues and sound issues from, from the public park. And again, the public park will not be compromised.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
I'm likewise in support. I think usually the big concern, I think, with the eight-foot fence is the impact on an abutting residential neighbor. In this case, that's not really going to be the effect. The effect is to the very active public park space. So I, that's usually, I think, the biggest concern and really the intent of the fence height restriction. So I think for all the other reasons already stated, I'm in support. And I just would like to note that, I don't know, you know, especially when my kids were little and we'd go in there all the time for soccer and everything, I never had the sense that, I mean, even though I guess on the map, I knew Swart Terrace was there, but I never had the sense any homes are right that close to the park, essentially because of all that vegetation. And I could see how like, this is a big change. And I'm glad that at least Eversource is, is working with the applicants. And hopefully, they get at least some relief here. And I think this is a very reasonable part of that, I believe.
Thank you. Ms. Boris.
I'm also in support, and for all the reasons already stated.
Thank you. And myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I too am in support of the application and for all of the aforementioned reasons. Would somebody care to make a motion? Thank you, Mr. Shaw.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owners, Sharon Tiesley and Scott Cochran, at 20 Swart Terrace, Sheet 48, Lot 74. The request is for a variance from land use code section 190-44 to exceed the maximum fence height, where six feet are permitted and six feet is existing, where eight feet is proposed for a 90-foot section along the rear yard property line. This is in the RA Zone. The variance is needed for the applicant's proposed use of the property. Given the special conditions of the property, the benefit cannot be sought by some other means reasonably feasible. There are some other parts of mitigation that the applicants are looking to do, but the fence is a significant part, fence height is a significant part of that, as noted in the application. There was a significant amount of essentially clearcutting of vegetation that had provided a significant noise and visual barrier for the property from the very active public usage of the park, as well as a 24/7 light, which is fixed and shining more or less directly at the applicant's rear property. This will provide some hopeful relief from the noise and light egress, or ingress, I should say, into their property. So it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. There's no indication of any negative effects on surrounding parcels, surrounding property values, surrounding parcel property values. It's not contrary to public interest, substantial justice will be served. And for those reasons, I move to approve this area of variance.
And thank you, Mr. Boucher, for your second. Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Carrier, how do you vote?
Mr. Carrier votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
And Mary Ellen McKay, I also vote in favor. Congratulations, Mr. Cochran and Ms. Gasly. I hope I said that correctly. Your application for the variance has been approved. Any decision made by this Board can be challenged, contested by any member of the public within 30 days of the decision. So should you have any questions or comments or concerns, please re-refer back to either Mr. Carter Falk or Ms. Kate Poirier in the Planning Department, and they will assist you. But other than that, congratulations, and thank you very much for presenting your application. Case number two. Shannon Melanson, owner, 45 Langholm Drive, Sheet C, Lot 406, requesting variance from land use code section 190-264 for accessory use area, 40% permitted, 62% existing, 78% requested, to construct a 16-by-16 pool cabana onto the rear of existing detached garage. This is in the R9 Zone in Ward 9. Is there somebody present to present this application? Would you please come forward and please state your name and address for the record?
Shannon Melanson, 45 Langholm.
I'm Curtis Vancilet, also a 45 Langholm. I'm Shannon's fiancee.
Then you have up to 15 minutes to present your case, and the floor is yours.
We're proposing to put a cabana on the backside of our garage that already exists. It's going to continuously flow with the garage, so it's going to look like just one big building still. It's not, it's not going to change the overall aesthetics of the neighborhood. It's, our request to put it up is because in the last year or two, we've reopened the pool that was just a big swamp, which would have been a more neighborhood eyesore than what it is now. Since we've opened it, we've had friends come over, we've had people come over and use it. But the only place they have to change or prepare to go in or out of the pool is our bathroom inside the house. This will allow us a place where they can go, where we can put an all-weather carpet in, and it won't water damage our home. Our bathroom has been getting a lot of water into it, and you can start to see some water markings on the base of the wood. I mean, obviously, we have kids that come over. They're not as caring about where the water goes. This is basically an attempt for us to have somewhere for them to go so that they can change, and it won't affect our home. It is right on a fence line. There is, I believe, eight feet from the back fence to this property. In doing research on our property line, it looks like previous owners of both properties had allowed some changes to be made in where fences were put and how they were put up, which makes it look like we are right on our butters' property. But as far as I can tell from both a survey that was done of the neighbor to our right's house being Kathy, that property line should go dead straight, and it doesn't. It jogs in eight feet and comes out to the corner of the property, where there was a shed that was constructed in that spot, which just this past week was removed from the property. And one of the pictures that's put up there in the opposition saying that we have clutter in our yard, shows that picture of where the shed used to be. That shows a bunch of gravel, rocks, bricks, which is not from us, but if the property line holds to where we believe it is, it would be on our property. Now, if we need to have a variance done, I mean, a survey done, we will do that. We will move the fence, and we will clean up that property line. This picture that you have right now, she's also questioning that fence, saying that it is her fence. If you look at that picture, you can see that with the way it's mounted, it, it belongs to 45 Langholm Drive. Now, the previous owners got into an agreement where Kathy's previous owner agreed to replace the fence at their cost, because they didn't like the way that one looked. But when they put it up, they flipped it to look like it belonged to them. But that picture right there, which is a previous picture of the fence, shows that it belonged to 45 Langholm Drive by the way it was installed. We all know that the, the straight part of the fence goes to your opposing neighbor, whereas the links that connect the fence go on your property, which is the way you can see that that is mounted, which opposes the theory that that's on Kathy's fence. She's saying that it's going to deteriorate her property value. I have asked her several times how it would, what I could do that would stop it. She refuses to answer to me. So I can't speak for how it's supposedly going to deteriorate her property value. It is going to be a direct extension of what's already there. I am going to re-side the whole garage so that it matches. I am going to have a peak roof to exactly match what's there. So it is exactly in a 16-foot extension off what's going to be there. I do plan on putting gutters on both sides of it so that it won't impede any drippings on any other property. That's pretty much what we've got. That's why we want it. And as far as what, now, just so that I, I can be clear here, we literally received notification of the opposition at 10:05 today. So we had no time to prepare for this. We had no time to talk to any of our other neighbors. As far as we knew, until 10:05 today, there was no opposition to this. So I, I apologize if I'm kind of flying off the cuff here, trying to figure out how to defend what we just found, you know, an hour ago. One of the other ones I noticed said that there was clutter in our yard. But if you look at the picture that comes from the property behind us, I'm failing to see clutter. I see a, a yard swing for the grandchildren, and I see a shed. It's a metal shed. It is a little rusty. I do plan on replacing that. It's just a fact of money and time as far as when. But if that's a clutter in an eyesore, I can fix that. But that has nothing to do with this side of the property. Trying to think of what the third proposal was for. I can't remember what the third proposal was, but.
Well, for any opposition, there will be time for you to have a rebuttal to any comments that are brought forward. So right now, I think the interest of the Board is the accessory use area.
There is still plenty of yard there. Like I said, she has two grandchildren that play in it. Her own children still use it. The yard itself is functionable. It's not that it's going to impede on function of the yard. It's not going to degrade any of the surrounding property's values in any way. It is a little bit more than the town allows for property usage, but we still have a large front yard. There's a pool. It's, it's 40 feet by 18 feet. That takes up half of the yard, and they consider that a permanent structure as part of the property. But it's really, my opinion, and her opinion, is it's not really a structure. It's in the ground, but it allows more usage of the yard, which is what we're looking to do. We're looking to optimize it. If we're going to continue to receive damage to our house because people keep coming in and getting our walls wet, well, then it's not going to make it worth us to use that part of the yard with our friends and family. And that's what we're trying to avoid.
Understood. Does any member of the Board have any questions? Mr. Lionel.
Yeah, oh, I, first of all, I would very strongly recommend that you get a licensed surveyor to mark your property lines. If I understand it correctly, that fence is considerable distance from the actual lot line, at least if I look at the city, the city's drawing.
Eight feet.
Yeah, so, you know, that's, it's not just a case of, of how the fence was installed, but it's just in the wrong place.
But it's eight feet on our property.
Yes, I understand that. But in terms of a visual, you know, a visual appearance as to where, where your lot is, you might want to consider relocating that fence. Just as a suggestion, because I did the same thing when I found that my lot line was six feet over from where I thought it was. So I moved the fence. The other que, I mean, the other comment I had, just based on your remark about The other que, I mean, the other comment I had, just based on your remark about you didn't consider the pool a structure, a structure, the city does.
Right.
And the issue is the ratio of the structure to the square footage of your house. And so, you know, that's just the way it is. You, so that's the formula. I don't think I had any further questions.
Thank you. Does Mr. Boucher?
Just for clarification, that structure, that's attached to the right side of the garage.
It's an awning.
It's an awning.
And it's temporary. The only reason, the only reason it's attached to the fence in any way is before I actually got the awning, the, the roof of the awning on, I had a tarp covering it, which did attach to the fence and it pulled the fence out a little bit from the snow going on it and the weight. And Kathy had complained about that, stating that it was, it didn't look right because it was now bowing out a little bit. So she had asked me if I could secure it and make it look straight again. So I actually secured it to what, what is holding the outside edge of the roof so that the fence would be straight.
So that, that, that structure was erected by, by who? Who was it built by?
That would be me.
That, that you're right. So you said it was temporary?
It's, it's not a permanent structure. It's not poured in concrete. It's, the only thing that's really secured anything is the side of the garage. I had the, the header.
So the reason I asked you is, is again, we're looking at accessories, you know, here and, and obviously, it's a concern, at least to me, as to, you know, what the reason behind this, what are you using it for? Because this adds to the percentage, right? In my mind, it adds to the percentage of what we're looking at, the old bridge. So, so, so again, it's being used, and again, we, we can drive by your property. We don't walk on anybody's property. You can try to observe. I just really try and understand kind of what you're using that, that for.
That is used for lawn mowers, snow blowers, yard tools, my table saw, my air compressor, big equipment that I use both for property maintenance and upkeep that don't fit anywhere else and don't wanna leave out in the weather.
You reference a metal shed, right?
On the, on the far side of the property, the opposite side.
And, and again, just, just so I can understand the usage of the property, that is being used for what purpose at this point?
That is used for the, the pool supplies. The awning that we have, it's a, we have a ten by twelve pop-up canopy type awning that is in the corner. One of the pictures actually shows that. It's, it's a pop-up awning, but we store it for the winter as well as we have a, a gas light fire pit type thing. The chairs, the, the table, all the stuff that we use in the yard for the winter, we store in that shed. I mean, that we use for the summer, we store in that shed for the summer as well as pool chemicals that we use, salt, because it's a salt pool. So we have, you know, fifteen bags of salt that you can't leave outside for obvious reasons. That's all for storage for yard stuff.
Has there been any thought of, and again, I, I don't know what the design of, is a cabana. I mean, that's your project to ask for, that, that size sixteen by sixteen. Sounds like, you know, like you're using it to obviously have a place for people to change and that type of thing. Is there any thought or has there been any thought to consolidate or, or maybe use this new space a part of it? This new space to maybe consolidate some of the other storage areas you have in the property?
If, if it means that I can get this cabana built, I can definitely use a portion of that to store everything in and then take down that shed if need be.
All right, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions of the applicant? Mr. Poirier?
It, it, on some of the pictures I see tonight, is there an addition on the garage on the left-hand side as you look?
That is, it's a, it's like a six by eight, I think, storage. That was already on there. I didn't put that there.
I guess a question for Mr. Falk. Was that in the, is that in the calculation? Yes, okay. All right, thanks. That's all I had for now.
Okay, there doesn't seem to be any further questions, so you can have a seat at this point. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak with any questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Would you come up, please state your name and address for the record? And one at a time, please, could come to the mic. You can have a, and when she's, or are, are you together? Yes. Oh, okay. But please just state both your names and addresses for the record.
Jean Tickler, thirty-seven Cortlandt Street, Nashua, New Hampshire.
Okay.
Catherine Robbins, forty-three Langholm Drive.
Okay, you have five minutes if I remember correctly.
Okay, this is repeating, however, I, I wanted to make sure it was noted. As we all know, the accessories already exceed forty percent of the principal structure. Currently, it's at sixty-two percent in accessory use. To add another sixteen percent, which will total to seventy-eight percent as a structure mentioned, it, it is totally excessive to what the codes allow. To add another structure to this barrage, which is, we don't know right now, which is the accurate property line. So we would, you know, foremost, would, would want to, you know, demand that there would be a surveyed property line. Because Kathy purchased this house how many years ago now? Eight years. And she just moved the shed because of the way the, the fence jutted out, as he mentioned. And, and how it will affect the character of the neighborhood and, and particularly us as the butters is you're adding a, it will be totaling a sixteen-foot by thirty-two-foot structure. Their main house is sixteen, sixty-eight square feet, and this new structure will be a total of thirteen oh one. It's almost another house being built on the property. There's no say about this other added shed, that that's gonna go away. So you're gonna have all these little piecemeal type of additions. And that in itself certainly changes the character of anybody's home and the other people around as far as adding. Since somebody did mention the fence, which we don't know, we're, we don't, we're not, we're pretty sure it is where it's supposed to be. But since you mentioned the overhang there, he changed the tarp to this supposedly temporary structure and now when it rains, the water is definitely coming onto the property and severe water damage there. So, you know, we would really insist that a survey property be done to designate the lines and, and start from there. Because if we allow another structure there, you know, if we don't, if she doesn't stay, wants to sell the property, it, it's just gonna be a continuing thing. And they mentioned the awning and all these other little storage areas. They have a garage. And so no one has asked what, how come they don't have any more room in their garage to store things? So that's all I have to say for right now.
So as far as the So as far as the extension off of the garage, I know, I, I've been reading and it says something about when you attach a roof to a garage, that is considered a permanent structure. Is that correct? Or, you know, that's a permanent structure. So that should be included in the, the calculations of how much use, yard usage that is, that they're, they're, they're using. So I'm new at this. I don't, you know, I've never stood up here and talked about land usage and land items, but I did not ever expect to have this happen when I bought my home. Thank you. And I don't wanna sign a variance because I believe that it will devalue my home and the homes around us and it changes the character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Mr. Shaw?
I wanted to just come back to the last question you were asking about. Was it, were you asking in the context of the, the awning that's very much a temporary type of?
Yeah.
Okay, so that, that wouldn't be considered part of the permanent structure because it really is not. But, you know, the other part of the, kind of the jog-out, smaller addition on the other side of the garage is essentially a physical permanent structure.
Even if there's
That part's included, but something like a tarp is not a permanent
There's no tarp there. That's a, there's a variegated
You have to speak into the mic.
Sorry, right.
You can just hold it.
So off of the garage is, there's a roof now. He replaced the tarp. And I was never under the impression that it was gonna attach to the fence. I thought there was gonna be some li, like little roof coming off the garage and that he was gonna close it up and put his, whatever he needed to put in there. I never expected it to be adjacent to my fence, causing my fence, it was kind of leaning over. I said, I did not like that. And as the roof part is over, like about six inches over the fence, all right, and all the water is running off and causing erosion. And I, that's all I have to say. I, I just don't think it's proper. And I believe that when you have a fence, there should be a two-foot setback from that fence.
The other thing I want to mention now, you say temporary. What is the timeline for a butter to be, you know, what's, what's temporary? As far as timeline?
I would defer to staff if Mr. Falk wants to comment.
Usually, something temporary is gonna be six months or less in duration. As far as permits go, but people can get them extended if they so desire, if there's good reason.
The other thing I wanted to clarify for you is that we make our decisions based on the information we're presented as far as the, the city has the GIS maps and we have the best representations that we're aware of regarding proximity of structures to lot lines and that part of things. But we don't, as this board, we wouldn't do a stipulation or any sort of requirement that a professional survey has to be done. That's something that you have to work out either on your own or in concert with your, your neighbor. But we, we don't say, we, we're going by the information that's presented, but we are not going to dictate anything regarding survey. That's a more of a civil process that you need to figure out. So I just wanna make sure that's clear because it's not, it's not in our purview and not something we, we can basically act on.
So that's aside from the matter then. So our case rests as we do feel that it's an obstruction because Kathy's deck is even overlooking. So we can see all these little structures and so can other butters in the neighborhood.
Under the mic, please.
And, and the, the, we have new neighbors behind them that totally are in, they, they can see the whole backyard. And they're, they have concerns also, and I believe we received a letter from them also.
And, and the other thing I just want to make aware, make aware to you is that we will, you know, if we approve something that was, or I should say, if the, if the applicant has a structure that's too close to the property line and does not meet setback, then there is a code enforcement issue. But we're not actually being presented with any, there's no indication that there's, there's a setback issue. We're only judging on the accessory use area. So what we're looking at is the total accessory use. So the, really, the proximity right now to the property line does not appear to be an issue for this board to judge. And we're going with the information we have that indicates that it does meet the setback.
So, so basically, they are seventy-eight percent over the land usage that they are allowed to have. And that is huge. That is a lot.
I wanted to ask you one more thing about that, and that is, are you strictly concerned about the, that percentage? Or if the applicant were to perhaps place the proposed cabana more to the other corner of the property, more towards the other end of the pool, would you still have the same concern or is part of your issue that this is presenting a bigger visual barrier close to the rear of your property?
Correct.
Just wanna understand your thoughts about that.
It's a visual. Now that I, I've removed my shed because it was on his property, I was told, and I did a proactive thing. I did get it off, okay? And now I will see that whole, the bill, it'll be sixteen by thirty-two feet. That's as big as a house practically on the side, like right there.
Go back to the mic, please.
Like right, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm Greek. I just can't, you know, I just talk with my hands and whatever. But I just want, I just don't think that it's feasible to have something seventy-eight percent more than what you're allowed. We are in a R nine zone. We follow the rules and we have a very nice neighborhood. And I, I think in all, we would all, we are, we're all proud of our, our land and our homes and we would like it to stay an R nine residential zone. That's what I, I just, I just
Mr. Lino and then Mr. Boucher.
Thank you. First, I, I would strongly encourage you and your neighbor to, it's in both of your interests to get that lot line surveyed and marked properly. Because there seems to be a disagreement between you as to where the lot line is. You talk about it being your fence, but the, the applicant, I forget the gentleman's name, because he's not actually the applicant.
The previous owners bought the fence and they replaced it and they put it in this
The testimony that we received was that that fence is actually eight feet in from the lot line. And it may or may not be, which is why I'm encouraging
Exactly. I'm not worried about the lot line right now.
Well, you should be because you, you've kept referring to the fence as your fence.
Well, he brought it up and I wasn't gonna bring up the fence.
In your, in your letter and in your testimony,
Yeah, okay.
It was referred to as your fence and, and the testimony of the applicant is that that fence is entirely on the forty-five property. And so it's not your fence. This is why I'm encouraging you
Okay, even if the original owners, who, the, the prior owners that had the home that I bought it from, they bought the fence and can I get them to, can I get proof or that doesn't?
No, no, you need to hire, hire a licensed surveyor and have them mark the property line. I, I had to do this myself because I wasn't sure where the, where my lot line was.
All right, so basically, what we're talking about here is the land usage and how much they're over.
Now, that, that brings me to my second point. You've repeatedly said seventy-eight percent more. It's not seventy-eight percent more. The city allows forty percent of the primary structure to be accessory structures and this is a request for seventy-eight percent, so it's thirty-eight percent more, not seventy-eight percent.
Sorry, I didn't mean to say. I have it written down here.
Yeah.
But it totals seventy-eight.
It's, it's total seventy-eight percent. Just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
The third thing I wanted to mention was the applicant said that they would install a gutter to direct water runoff from the structure. Now, there is, there is a require, a city requirement that nobody can erect a structure that will cause runoff, excessive runoff onto somebody else's property. So if that's happening, then that would need to be corrected. But what we heard was that the applicant was going to put gutters on to direct that water so that it would not flow onto your property. So that's, that's one thing.
Can I just interject if, so the, but the variance has nothing to do with putting that gutter on?
It doesn't. However, sometimes we, the purpose of this board is to grant exceptions to the, to the ordinances. That's why we're here. And sometimes we say yes and sometimes we say no. Sometimes we put stipulations on the request. And Mr. Shaw was correct, saying we can't say you must get the lot line surveyed. But one thing we can do is we can say you must make sure that there is But one thing we can do is we can say you must make sure that there is no, no water runoff onto somebody else's property. And that's a, a city requirement, actually. And so we, we can suggest that there's gutters or drainage or whatever that's there, and we can put that in a stipulation. Do you, you agree? Yeah, Mr. Shaw? Okay. Just making sure I'm not talking out of my hat, which I don't have. I think that's all for now.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
I would really like to have Mr. Falk, the airport from the city side, and have his professional opinion on what we're going to be.
Can you switch down your lines to the other one?
Here, here's the next one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Falk.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Boucher. The fence really has, has nothing to do with this issue at all. Fences don't even require a building permit and they can go right up to a property line. So the fence should not even be part of the discussion. The applicant has stated, and we take it at face value, that the setbacks are all met and we're going to rethink based on the GIS maps that they are. So that shouldn't be an issue. The only issue is the 16 by 16 addition onto the back of the garage. The existing garage is also that same size, so that's already there. So this is just an extension past it, the same roof line. So that's what the variance is for, only that accessory use above. So a lot of other issues have been going on with things that aren't appropriate to the application.
May I follow up?
Yes, sir.
So, so Mr. Falk, just, just again, it may, it's probably, so it, what is the definition of the, 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 uh, the awning on the side of the garage? How does the city look at that? As far as this, as far as this process and looking at percentages and stuff?
I mean, we would count it as long as it's part of a, a structure stuck in the ground. We would count it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for the applicant?
Well, I, I think while the applicant's present, I have a question for Mr. Falk. My observation from the street was that the structure that's kind of going over to the fence is a hard roof. And this, and so I just want to get clarity. To me, that should be in the calculation. That is a structure that's been added without a permit. That's what I'm thinking now, but am I right or wrong on that?
I mean, we would count it. I haven't been out there. I didn't, I never got a chance to do a drive-by of the property to see it, so.
There's a cement pad. Sorry.
But right now, the, the conversation-
We, we would call it a structure, so it would be counted as accessory use area.
Thank you.
Are you good, Mr. Courier?
Well, I guess I had one other thing for the applicant.
Kathy?
No, no, she's not the applicant. She's the-
I'm sorry, for the, for the lady who just spoke, Kathy. And it's just, I just wanted to reiterate what Mr. Lionel said. I had the same issue when I bought my house in 1992, and where, where's a property line? My neighbor and I didn't know. It's just as valuable for you, for you to do a survey on your property because that defines your four corners or curves or whatever it is. It has nothing really to do with this application for, for land use because we're going with the numbers here, but I, I just say that, that I would highly encourage that as well, even though that's not part of this application, I'd just throw that out.
It's, it's not part of the conversation, but doesn't that, that could be adding or subtracting some portion of this percentage that-
No.
No?
No. It, it isn't land percentage. It's the ratio of the, of the structures-
Structures, okay.
-to the, to the main dwelling unit. And so the, the, where the lot line is, it is not relevant here.
But-
I'm all set. I didn't have anything else to say.
Anyone else have any comments? It is, um, the relevance on that lot line is probably something that, again, you should do for yourself. It's not something that we can intervene on right now, but as Mr. Courier, Mr. Lionel, board members have stated, check that line when we had property next to us, they were building something, the surveyor came out and they had to move a shed because they were well into our property line. So it's really valuable for whoever, but for both parties, to understand where your lot lines are. You're paying taxes on that.
Right, right. And I, I feel very good about having the shed moved because it was on their property. And it's been like that for four owners, and I don't know what happened, but I was the unlucky one.
Yeah, it, it happens.
You know? Think about it.
Yeah.
Four owners.
Yeah.
And now it's an issue. I'm sorry. Back in the old days, people would say, yeah, go ahead, put your shed here and-
That was then.
That was then.
This is now.
This is now. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, we have-
We need to ask for more.
I know, I know. And I have letters here. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? And is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak with comments, questions, or concerns to the application? We are in receipt of emails that came in and they need to be read into the record. This is to the Nashua Zoning Board of Adjustment, and it says, "Upon reviewing information from City of Nashua concerning land use variance requested for 45 Langhome Drive, I wish to express the following concerns. The ordinance allows this property a total of 667.2 square feet of accessory use. The swimming pool, 512 square feet, and garage, 448 square feet alone total 950 square feet, already exceeding the allowance by 292.8 square feet. The property is already 22% over zoning allowance. I feel that allowing an additional 256 square feet to this total would set an undesirable precedent in which future neighborhood applicants could reference this variance. If approved for excessive land use for any reason, I oppose the approval of this variance. Thank you for the opportunity to express my view on this matter," and it is from Melvin J. Hibbert, 44 Langhome Drive, Nashua. We have your letter, Kathy, but you are here. We also have another letter to the members of the Zoning Board of Nashua, New Hampshire. We have just moved to this neighborhood in the past two months, and we are on the backside of budding Shannon Melanson's property at 45 Langhome Drive. We can see the backyard of Melanson's property from our deck, and there is already so much clutter, it is an awful sight. We strongly oppose to granting Shannon Melanson this variance, and we have been informed that this property already exceeds the zoning laws. As a butters and new neighbors, we hope that the zoning members can uphold the codes of our neighborhood. Thank you sincerely, Wen Zhao and Eugenia Lu." And I hope I did not destroy that poor woman's name. I have, let's see, there's one more. Here it is. "To the members of the Nashua Zoning Board of Adjustment, this email is in regard to the request by Shannon Melanson, 45 Langhome Drive, Sheetzilup 406, requesting a variance from land use code section 190 dash 264 to increase the accessory use area. I received a notice of public hearing and am responding through this email. I am emailing to express my opposition to this request for that variance. The land use codes for accessory use areas were established to prevent residential owners from overdeveloping their properties, often creating structures and property densities that can ultimately influence monetary values of surrounding properties in a given neighborhood. The property at 45 Langhome Drive has already exceeded the 40% permitted for accessory use by 22%. The request could add another 16% to its use for a total of 38% above the permitted use, as well as add another permanent structure, appropriate or not, to the property. Though I do not have a direct visual to all of the property in the back where the structure is proposed, I see that, I will see that structure. I have been in frequent contact with an abutting neighbor, have seen the entire backyard area at 45 Langhome Drive from her yard, and am very aware of her concerns. The established land use percentages are created to prevent residential properties from excessive structures and/or usage which could affect neighboring homeowners' financial investments in their own properties as well as their quality of life. I am asking that my concerns be addressed to the board at the upcoming Nashua Zoning Board of Adjustment meeting, Tuesday, June 28th, 2022, at 6:30 PM in City Hall, re-case number two, and the requested variance be denied. Respectfully submitted, June 27th, 2022, Robert S. Whitmore, 42 Long Home Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire homeowner, at this address since 1977." Those are all the letters or emails, to my knowledge, that we have received. Now, the applicant, Shannon, you and your fiancee have an opportunity to rebut the comments, the concerns that we have read to you or that have been presented. So one person can come to the mic and speak to those concerns, please.
First of all, 42 Langhome Drive, we never got a copy of that at all in any way. So we had no form of knowing what was going on with that to be able to rebut that. As far as them saying there's clutter in our yard, I'm asking that they show what they're talking about for clutter. My opinion, clutter is, is junk, waste, whatever you don't need that depict, detakes, sorry, takes away from the value of a property. Again, I stated, there's a, a playset in the backyard that kids use. There's a swimming pool in the backyard that gets used. Neither of those take away from how the property itself looks. They're concerned with how it's going to look by adding this piece on. It's literally going to extend one building by 16 feet. I know Kathy keeps saying 16 by 32. It's not. It's 16 by 16. It's literally only extending the building that's already there by 16 feet. It's going to have a stream sightline. It's, it's not going to jog. It's not going to look unsightly. It's not going to have two different color sightings. It's going to match. It's going to look exactly like the building that is there. She keeps talking about us damaging her property by water runoff. I asked that she show what damage is being caused by water runoff because-
Excuse me, that right now is not what's before this board.
Okay.
And I think I was remiss. Did you repeat your name and address for the record?
I'm Curtis Vanceallet, 45 Langhome Drive.
Thank you, Curtis. Okay. Um, please proceed. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt your frame of thought.
It just seems like they're saying that we're cluttering our yard. Our yard is not cluttered. It's, it's used. We do have large families, both of us, so we do entertain. We do have friends and family that come over. I'm sorry if nobody else in the neighborhood can understand that because they're all of an age where their families have moved on. They don't come over. They don't entertain. They don't actually use their yard for entertaining. We do. Therefore, the, the structures that we have make it easier for us to entertain without either damaging our home, which is the primary reason we want to do this, the water damage from the pool and them going in and changing and leaving wet bathing suits on the floor in our bathroom up against a wall is going to cause damage. It's going to cause mold and mildew. I've already had to replace walls in that bathroom for that reason. It is a basement bathroom, so moisture will stay where it sits. It's not like it's upstairs where it's going to dissipate. It's going to stay. So if somebody does put water against a sheet rock wall, it's going to form mold and mildew. Now, I, I mean, I can go on and on about how that's going to affect the health of the people in the house. So in effect, this cabana is going to help our family stay healthier in the house because we won't have to deal with mold. It's not going to be unsightly. It's not going to water runoff to anybody's property. It's not going to deteriorate anybody's property values. It's literally going to just continue on where it is by 16 feet. Is it more than the-
You have a little over a minute, sir.
I'm sorry. It's, 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 it's more than the town allows for property usage, but it's not like it's unnecessary use. It's useful use. It's helpful use. It's, it's the best use of that property. I mean, that section of the land, it drops down into a hill. You can't use it as yard play because everything runs into the fence and you really can't like play ball over there. You can't really use that section of the corner of the yard because the, the land just runs down. So this is actually going to help us be able to use that section of the land. I think that's all I got.
Thank you. And now, yes, Mr. Shaw?
I want to follow up again because I feel like I'm confused and I'm not certain what you might have said earlier. The awning that is attached right now, that, that is connected to the-
I didn't realize being attached to the garage made it a permanent structure. I can put up posts that detach it from the actual garage if that's an issue.
I think the concern, and let me just, this might, one more time.
One more time back to Mr. Falk.
But I think that is not calculated in the percentage use. Is that correct? Because that was Mr. Courier's kind of question. It seems that perhaps that, well, you said you installed that awning. Did you get a permit for that?
I didn't realize I needed one to put an awning up. No, I didn't.
So I would believe that the city wouldn't have that calculated into the area calculation.
I mean, if we had it on our plan, we would count it. Whatever, whatever we have to look at, we would count. So I believe it was counted in the, in their, all their numbers.
Okay, so-
So it was counted.
All right. So what, what you submitted to the city included that dimensional part of-
All those measurements are on my paper, yes.
Yeah, they are.
All right, thank you.
Okay, are we?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, we are good, and I think we can now-
No, the, uh-
Exactly.
The objector.
Um, Kathy, you can come up and make a statement as to what you just heard, or you can let your case, as it were, rest as it is. But you can only speak to anything that Curtis stated, the applicant stated. You cannot bring in anything new or anything that wasn't brought forward by the applicant.
Please step to the mic.
As far as, as far as the cabana, it's a pretty big cabana, and I don't believe that-
Yes.
Name and address.
Oh. Your name and address.
Catherine Robbins, 43 Langhome Drive, Nashua. I don't believe the cabana, what is, is intended to be the cabana, and as far as, I, I'm, I'm very, um, yeah, I don't believe it's a hardship to have that, you know? And that's basically what he's trying to do, is say, we need the cabana to go in and change. A 16 by 16 foot addition to the garage does make it 16 by 32 feet. He's adding it to the garage where you look at it and it, it's as big as his house, okay? And that's my concern. It is along my property. I'm on my deck and I visualize and I see it. It's a big structure, okay? I believe he has two bathrooms in his home.
But that's-
That's not an issue, which I understand.
That's not what was discussed.
And I understand that, and I just want to say that the cabana is, it's just, everything, as far as the, it's over you, it, it's over the usage of what he's allowed, and it's a lot. It's not a small amount. He was already over the, the, um, the amount of land usage that he was allowed to have, and now he wants more. So if you give him this variance, it's going to set a precedence in the neighborhood for other people to do this. And we are zoned for a R9, and we have rules that we need to follow. And I follow the rules, and I hope that everybody else will follow the rules also. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Courier?
Me first? All right.
What do you?
I guess I want to bring to the board's attention, this, what's in our application, if you want to take a look at that. And, and on this photograph or GIS map, I'm not seeing the structure on the right-hand side. of the garage. And on the page before in our application that has the length size, I also don't see the structure on the right-hand side of the garage. So, I know I've kind of focused a bit on that, but I am focused on that because what I see is a structure on the right-hand side of the garage. So, that's one issue. Thank you, like on that, there's no structure on the right-hand side of the garage. And I guess what I'm seeing is just in the photograph, right here, this is the structure I see when I walk by, and that's not, that's not a, you know, a canvas or an awning, you know, sometimes people roll down an awning when the sun is out. This is a permanent structure. And as I see it, this is attached to the roof of the garage, and if it's unattached and posts are put in the ground, that's still a permanent structure. But, I mean, so, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, I'm feeling that that's not in the calculation, and I, so I guess I'm struggling with an application that I'm not sure is correct in front of us, and this has nothing to do with the property line, it has to do with accessory use area. So, I'm feeling that our number does not include this, and I invite everybody to correct me how I'm wrong. So, that's just one thought I want to throw out. The other concern I have is, we've certainly seen a lot of cases for accessory use where there's a detached garage. I think by and large, this board kind of approves those under the rationale that, well, if the garage was attached, the accessory use would then be well under. One of the observations I make is when you have topography in the neighborhood, that's more of a challenge to the abutters. If the lawns, if the properties are all flat, you have fences, when you have low properties and high properties, the disruption, say, to neighbors can be a bunch greater. And I guess my sense is, we certainly see a lot of opposition to this, and I'm feeling like the abutters are feeling there's a lot of activity now and this is only gonna increase it. I guess that's just an opinion of mine, and I invite everybody else's on that, but I guess just another thought I have is, a 16 by 16-foot cabana is, I feel, pretty darn big. And so, I guess I'm struggling with the application, I'm not coming down on one side of the fence or the other, but I think it's, I think it's, 16 by 16, to me, is, could very well, if it is used as a cabana, just add a lot of commotion, more disruption. So, I'm struggling with the application, and I'm looking forward to being told I'm wrong and right or wrong, and hearing other opinions.
Mr. Falk, Mr. Courier really does bring up a good point, but there has to be some clear way to understand if what this structure looks more like a pergola than anything else. And is that structure, whether or not it's attached to the garage or not, is that, or has that been referenced in anything that you, as the city, can justify, or say that it was absolutely in, you know, counted in your calculations? Because that seems to be the crux of, that's the horns of the dilemma.
Well, the last page of the applica, well, of the package, is a letter that our staff wrote to the owner, and all, the bigger paragraph in the middle shows, looks like this.
Yeah.
Shows all the, all the numbers on here, all based on all the numbers we had to go on, that's all from assessing data that we got, so. I mean, I don't really know what to say other than, you know, we believe this, all these numbers are what they're paying taxes on and what we have records of, records for. There's only so much on their, on their property to count, really. There's the pool, the garage, there's a shed that doesn't really show, and a little addition off the side of the garage. Correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know if there's anything else I'm supposed to be counting, I think that's it. So, those are the numbers we had, we went, we had to go on. I mean, if there's a little portion that was built on the side of the garage that we don't have a permit for, I believe we counted it. If not, we're talking, it's, you know, like 70 square feet, their percentage goes from maybe 78 to 79 percent. It shouldn't be that, I mean, I'm not a math genius to do it in my head right now, but, you know, we added the numbers that we had from our assessing data, and we added the 16 by 16 addition to the garage, and that's how we got to 78 percent.
Okay, so, I guess we move forward, understanding that regardless of if it's there or not there, it's gonna add a 1 percent to the 78. Mr. Shaw?
So, just doing a little bit of math, though, it does look like, the letter from staff says 448 square feet for the garage slash shed structure. So, the 16 by 16 is 256 square feet, the 7 by 12 additional structure that kind of faces the pool is another 84 feet, that brings it to 340 feet. So, there's, there is 108 square feet that's not, and I'm not calculating, which I'm assuming is, if I take 108, in fact, divided by 16, 6.75, so it's, it very well seems like it might be accounting for that structure running along the length of the garage, so. So, it does, I mean, I have some other concerns now thinking about it, like, now we're talking about something that's perhaps that much closer to the setback, and it seems that perhaps that's still being met based on the discussion about the fence being eight feet in from the property line, so it's probably meeting the standard setback, but I'm not quite as confident in that anymore. And I'm a little concerned that we're also talking about the structure, modified structure that doesn't, didn't have a permit pulled for it, you know.
Exactly, and if we're trying to make a calculation, we're making it on a supposition or an assumption because we don't have the actual or factual property line. We just don't, but I don't think anyone else involved does either. Mr. Boucher, I hate to put you next to my hot seat, but-
So, I'm just following up with Mr. Shaw's concern and stuff, and not to make this, to draw on his case, but at this point, I would just maybe offer up, and not to create more work with staff, but would it make sense right now to table our meeting as we are, give staff some time to maybe review exactly what the, what the square footage of accessory units are, verify that this additional, the additional addition on the garage is within a setback as far as what the city believes, and maybe with that, some of that information, we can make a better decision on, on what we believe, you know, what we believe we want to go with this, you know, each individual. So, I'll just offer that up, if that makes sense to anybody.
Thank you for reading my mind. That makes absolute sense. What does the rest of the board, because I would have to then ask the applicant, but what is the will of the board? Does it make sense to consider tabling this till we have more information that setback could be an issue? Mr. Courier?
I guess I was hoping to hear all the opinions of the board before we-
Before we decided? Okay, that's fine, that's absolutely fine. I like that, and then, so, next, I'm gonna go to Mr. Shaw.
Well, so, this is why I don't think to move forward for myself, because, because,
again, you're asking for the opinion, and I'm, so I'm gonna make an assumption on what I believe right now, is whether or not, if, you know, if I, if I, I'm going to give Mr. Courier, you know, the, my due, and say, okay, you know, I'll give a 50 percent chance that the structure wasn't added, and then I can look at it as like, well, it is added, or I can look at it, it doesn't matter to me, but at this point, it seems to be such, at least to Mr. Courier, it's an important thing, and I think, again, we should, again, in this case, maybe have all the information, and maybe it won't change anybody's mind, but maybe we could say that the application was complete as far as if we had all the numbers. Now, this is no reflection on staff, this is just maybe something that's unknown, maybe the last information that they have doesn't show the structure there, and again, we all lead busy lives, and I'm sure the city staff is very busy, and, you know, if Mr. Falk didn't get out just to look and say, oh, Jesus, I, that's not there, let's give the opportunity to do that, and again, I don't think, and furthermore, I don't think we have to get an okay from the applicant, that's our decision because we're in this part of the meeting stage now, we're not, I believe, if I'm, if I'm not correct, let me know.
I would say, you can make the motion right now, we don't, we don't have to, you know, if there's disagreement on the board, so I think you should make a motion to table for those reasons.
If you make the motion-
We have to act on it.
Mr. Boucher, I will second you.
Okay, all right, so I'm gonna make a motion right now to, to-
Table to-
This, this case to the next meeting, which would be-
Well, that's only two weeks' time, so-
26, July 26.
July 26.
Is that enough time?
Do we have to re-advertise, Mr. Falk?
I don't know.
Okay, so?
I can't tell without looking at all the numbers again, so, I don't know.
So, could we table this to the first meeting in August, then, to give people, I don't know how much time the city's gonna need or how much-
You can certainly table to the July 26 meeting, and it can be further tabled if necessary.
At July 20, okay, I like your thought process.
Even comes to us, it says the applicant asked, and now, you know, postpone this to the following meeting, so.
Okay.
So, my motion is to table to the next meeting, July 26, to gather more information on the, the actual square footage percentages.
And I will second that motion, and I will now take a vote. Mr. Lionel, how do you-
Can we have this discussion first?
Oh. Discussion on the tabling motion.
My main thing is perhaps guidance to the applicant and to the abutter, that this might provide an opportunity to get that lot line understood, because now I do think, as I noted earlier, it could be more of a concern with the placement of the additional part of the permanent structure to the garage, and I would like to make sure that I can feel confident that that, there's no setback that's being incurred upon, so, that's what, it's not a requirement, but it's a suggested point of data that might benefit one, both of you in the process.
And if that-
I just wanted to get that kind of out there for potential guidance.
And if that fence is incorrect, the water runoff could be on the applicant's property, so, yes, Mr. Boucher?
Pointing, well, to Mr. Shaw, but I also believe, though, that at this point for the next meeting, I think we're gonna have to rely on what city staff has for the lot line at this point.
I completely agree, but it could end up being found out by whoever pursues it, that there is or is not an issue regarding setback. Right now, we don't have that before us, but I have some concern based on the limited information that we have.
Yeah. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Lionel, would you like to weigh in? Mr. Courier?
Well, I'm in favor of tabling, I guess I wanted to raise the issue that I think, sometimes we ask an applicant to reduce the size of an addition, to reduce the overage, and in my personal opinion, 16 by 16 for a, what's essentially a changing, asked for as a changing room, is larger than is really required for that. And so, I would, might request of the applicant to consider reducing the size of the addition to something more appropriate for the intended use. Other than that, I am in favor of tabling it until we get a better idea of whether there is actually a setback issue, so.
Mr. Boucher?
So, that would trigger the fact that we would then, to get that information, we would have to reopen a public hearing, correct? Because we're in a public meeting stage, and my understanding at this point, I'm not, I'm not against any doing anything, I'm just saying we were just going to table this meeting, and then we would proceed back in the public meeting, not the public hearing. So, to get the information Mr. Lionel would want, we'd have to go back to the public hearing to get that information at the time of that meeting, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
But I don't think that that would be difficult or a hardship, it might benefit the board, the applicant, and the abutters.
Right.
I can't, and the city, I just don't see the downside to that.
So, for the public knowledge, clearly, we would, we can and would only open the public hearing at this time, what we know, would just be to get that one piece of information, right?
Yeah, pretty much, and, but then again, in going to the most recent conference on zoning and planning, the chair would be, and does have, the flexibility of going ahead and asking those questions, and having that open and revisiting some of that. And so, that's all, and that came from the attorneys that were speaking. So, I made note of a lot of these things, because no matter how many times you go to those conferences, you always learn something new. And there is that, and so, I think it's just beneficial for every one of us here. Mr. Courier or Ms. Boras, do you have any comments before we go to a vote, I mean, for part of this discussion?
No, I have no further comments, that's already, we've already discussed.
So, I'm sorry, if this is tabled, would the public meeting be open, public hearing be opened again?
That would be the purview of the chair, the board, and the chair and the board, but the chair could do that.
Okay. I guess, since I'm, since we're looking for more information from staff-
Yeah, we are.
-and Mr. Shaw has, I think, wisely suggested, you know, property line might be a great benefit, that to me kind of leans towards opening the public hearing, but I guess we'll make that decision in a-
No, I concur, I mean, it does lean in that direction because you're, you're asking for an awful lot more information, but it's good information, this is not a bad, it's a good. So, are we good to move forward to the vote? Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor of the motion to table.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor of the motion to table.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
And myself, Mariella McKay, I also vote in favor. Mr. Falk and Ms. Melanson, the board has tabled this discussion to the July 26 meeting, where hopefully there will be more information gathered, and we'll move forward from there. Listening to the conversation throughout the board's meeting might be extremely beneficial to yourselves to look at, if this may change setbacks, it may change a lot of things, but as numerous members of this board have stated, a survey, the property line is probably one of the most beneficial things that should happen. So, having said that, we will see you back here on the 26th. Should you have any comments, questions, concerns on how to move forward or how this is gonna look, please re-refer back to Mr. Falk in the Planning Department, he can help you and guide you, I'm sure Ms. Poirier can as well, but please, re-refer and ask questions. That's a question for Mr. Falk, actually, or Ms. Poirier.
Fine, we'll, we'll take it. You can leave it.
For the next year.
We need to put it up for the next year.
Okay, go on.
We'll make, we'll let you know, we'll pitch another one. You may not need another one, if all the numbers are the same, you can use the same sign, but we'll, we'll be in touch with you, we'll be, we'll be meeting on it.
Absolutely. We'll leave you back here.
Then, we'll move on to the last case of the evening, and thank you very much for your presentation, and we'll see you again. I know. But that's-
That's my problem.
I know, I understood, and that's why I said what I said earlier about the conference, you know, I got you.
Okay.
Case number three. Case number three. Jennifer Vittorino and Vando Fernandez, owners, 12 Gillis Street, Sheet 27, Lot 78, requesting variance from land use code section 190-264 for accessory use area. Forty percent permitted, 33 percent existing, 60 percent requested to erect an 18-foot diameter above-ground swimming pool. This is in the RB zone, Ward 7. And seeing as you are the only person here, I'm assuming you are the applicant, would you please come forward, state your name and address for the record?
Hello, my name is Jennifer Vittorino. I'm, I live at 12 Gillis Street in Nashua. We're requesting 20 percent more than the 40 percent allowed to put an 18-foot round saltwater pool. Our home is 936 square feet of livable space, which doesn't give us much, much room to work with, since our detached garage has taken up most of that space right now. So we're requesting the 20 percent, you know, I believe it brings it to 60 percent. So I'm, I don't believe that it's going to cause any harm to any of the neighbors. It's completely fenced in. You probably wouldn't, you probably wouldn't even see it from the street if you drove Sorry.
It's okay.
I mean, mainly, it's, I, me and my husband have thought about getting a pool for a couple years now. We've debated, you know, doing semi-in-ground, you know. Finally came to a decision on getting the 18-foot round pool, only because it's, the saltwater, because I have eczema, and it's good for your skin, so it'd be more of a therapeutic thing for me. I have two kids, and, you know, we'd like to spend as much time as we can in this property, you know, and having them grow into it, and, you know. And she's taking swimming lessons, so she'll, you know, learn how to swim.
And she sat there an hour and a half of this, so I'm pretty impressed.
She loves to swim, and I hear it every day now. She loves to swim. I don't know, how do you, how do you, I don't know how to say that we really need the pool, we really don't, but we want it, and, you know, instead of having to venture out and, you know, go somewhere else, you know, we'd like to stay home and entertain our family at home in our backyard and...
Vacation in your backyard?
Pretty much. And I work from home, so it'd be nice, you know, to take a swim on my lunch break, or probably the only exercise I'll get, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Does, oh, Mr. Shaw?
So, and I, I think I can pretty much just observe this, but I just, you know, since you're obviously the one that lives there, in the neighborhood and all, but to me, it appears that you have, one of the smaller homes, and/or many of the other homes, even if they're more equivalent to the size of your home, have an attached garage, whereas you seem to be one of the few homes that has the detached garage.
Yep.
Which in the calculations, very much works against you...
Right.
...because of the way the ordinance is written. So what I see is, the combination of your garage and your home, the square footage very similar to the existing neighborhood, and not any excessive amount or anything like that. It's really just the calculation, but I just wanted to see if you concur on that, or if that's, you also concur with that opinion, that, you know, you're not, you don't have some very large, large home that this calculation is based off of.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last thing you just said.
Your, your home is not excessively large, that this is driving some calculation that because you're doing something very excessive with the accessory use, it's more that it's a very relatively small home, and the garage is all the same.
Yeah, the garage is, it's a pretty big garage. And, I mean, our house is bigger than 936 square feet, it's just, you know, we have the basement and the attic, and it's just not considered livable.
I'm looking at like, I'm looking at like number 14 and number 16, they look like maybe the home is about the same size...
Yeah.
But the garage is attached. Or it's an exten, or it's an addition, like, maybe that, yeah, there's, I guess those are additions, not garages.
There's a, the, the ones to the left of us, they have a garage. I believe it's detached.
I was misreading them, but still, I, I think I'm, I think you've confirmed what I'm seeing already, so.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, may have a seat.
Thank you.
Um, there's no one here present to, I know, make any comments in favor. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of this application?
Yeah, sure. My name is Felipe Martinez. I'm the owner at 11 Gillis Street. And I don't have, I'm not neighbors like next to her, but, I mean, you can't see anything in their backyard, so I'm for it.
Thank you very much, sir. Does anyone have any questions for Felipe? Okay, we're good, thank you. Does anyone, there's no one here to, wants to speak in opposition. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. And where's my little paper here? I think that's Mr. Boucher.
I'm in full support of the application, think it meets all the criteria, and again, as Mr. Shaw stated, we're just looking at a smaller home and a detached garage on this lot, so no issues here.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
I pretty much concur with Mr. Boucher.
Ms. Boras?
I'm also in support of the application.
Mr. Lionel?
I'm also in support for the reasons stated.
Mr. Courier?
I'm also in support for the reasons stated by Mr. Shaw and Mr. Boucher.
And myself, Mariella McKay, I am also in support of the application.
She's going to be really happy about that.
I know. She's excited you're going to get a pool.
She can't wait to dive in.
I know. Would somebody care? Mr. Shaw, thank you, sir.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of Jennifer Vittorino and Vando Fernandez, the owners at 12 Gillis Street, Sheet 27, Lot 78, a request is from land use code section 190-264 for accessory use area, where 40 percent is permitted, 33 percent is existing, and 60 percent is requested. This is to erect an 18-foot diameter above-ground swimming pool, which is in the RB zone. The area variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. Primarily is that the home is a relatively small structure, and there is a detached garage present, but the overall usage and footprint of this accessory use will still leave plenty of open space in the yard. I believe it's within the spirit and tenet of the ordinance, there's no indication that there will be any adverse effect on property values and surrounding parcels, is not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice will be served, therefore I move to approve this area variance.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Lionel. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
And myself, Mariella McKay, also vote in favor. Um, here we go. Your variance has been approved. As we've stated earlier this evening, should anyone have any concerns about any decision made by this board, they have the right to challenge that decision, and they have thirty names with which to do so. Should you have any questions, any concerns, you need any assistance, please re-refer back to Mr. Park or Ms. Tate Poirier in the Planning Department. Again, thank you for presenting, and congratulations.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Please move on to the business of the board.
Are we okay?
You're all set.
All right, awesome, thank you. Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you. We have no motion for a rehearing. Is, does anyone see any regional impact on the next agenda?
I do not.
I do not.
So that's all five of us do not. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes? Do they meet with...
I saw no, nothing to complain about.
I saw no edits needed.
Would somebody, I was not here, so does somebody want, Mr. Shaw?
I'll move to approve the minutes on June 14, 2022, as only Board of Adjustment.
And Mr. Boucher seconds that. Okay. Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
And Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
And myself, Mariella McKay, I also vote in favor. That is unanimous. I don't think we have any other business in front of the board.
Move to adjourn.
Okey-dokey, then, we move to adjourn. All in fa, oh, we're adjourned at 8:11. Thank you very much. I will see you all in August. I will not be here in the month of July.
I'm sorry, who, oh.